...the session from 1 to 5:30 this evening, this afternoon, to discuss the personnel matter related to our search for a new township manager, and we'll have a report of our ad hoc search committee under Commissioner Committee Updates. The Board of Commissioners also did meet this evening from 6:30 to 7:00 PM to discuss a number of personnel, real estate, and legal-related matters. You could all please rise and join our Chief of Police in the Pledge of Allegiance.
[inaudible]
Thank you, Chief. We start off this evening with a presentation by Tim Denny, our Assistant Township Manager and Director of Parks and Rec, and he's going to make a presentation on our park improvement program, talking about the scope and focus and process behind the plan. And thank you, Tim, for being here and look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Andy. Well, good evening, Commissioners. I know you have had a long day with interviews for the position of Township Manager, and I wish you wisdom in that decision. I'm sure you'll make a good one. On a personal note, I want to publicly thank Larry. I have had the privilege and the pleasure of working with Larry for 12 years through some of our most significant times in our township history. So I just want to acknowledge Larry and the great work that he's done and working with him. As I've told some of you, I have held off on my own retirement till later in the year in the hopes that I can help Amy and this board and the new manager make this transition to new leadership. But the reason I'm here tonight is to talk to you about a decision that you made a few months ago, which in some ways will impact this township even more over the next years and generation. And that was the decision to put significant funds towards the allocation of upgrading our parks, and specifically our park infrastructure. And that decision, because of its scope, because of its impact, because of its longevity, it's fair to say will impact the people of this township and the image of this township even more than the decision that you are currently faced with. And I say that not to be disrespectful at all, but I don't think too many people choose a township where they're going to live based on their Township Manager or Assistant Township Manager. But a lot of people do base their decision where they're going to live on the quality of their parks and their facilities. And by you making the decision that you did, you're going to impact our township for a long, long time. And these graphs will show, indicate that. It's fairly obvious, 78%, 9 and 10, 76%. More significant is when people decide where they're going to live, and the next few graphs show that it cuts across all boundaries, age, education, even politics. Americans seek high-quality parks and recreation amenities when choosing where to live. 85% is the average, high school, college incomplete, college grab, cuts across. They rank that as an extremely high priority when choosing a place to live. Next is by generation. Us old timers, the boomers were 82%, Generation X, 86%, Millennials, 90%. The very people you're trying to bring into the township. Even political, look at that. 90% of Democrats, 86% of Republicans rate the amenities of your township, your park amenities, as very important in decisions they make. You're not going to see too many things that Republicans and Democrats agree on these days. In 1942, the Board of Commissioners made a significant decision which impacted this generation for the last 75 years, and that was to start buying up some of the open space in this township because it was being developed at such a rate. That impact has, that decision has impacted us for generations. In 2003, the Board of Commissioners made what I would suggest was an equally impactful decision when they decided to purchase Haverford State Hospital. And from that decision, other things have come. 2009, decision to start developing the fields. 2011, Fleerum Playground and the dog park. 2012, crack open. Ribbon cutting, we're all younger then. The park maintenance doesn't get ribbon cutting. There's the white paper that I tried to send to you, and I apologize if you weren't able to open it up, emphasizes the importance of park maintenance and allocating funds for park maintenance, because without that, it's like your car, your house, you know? You've got to keep putting money into it, and that's really where the majority of your funds go, and there's no ribbon cutting for the kind of things we're talking about. And yet, the impact is even greater. So because of the scope of what we are going to do, I want to introduce you, and because of longevity, and that I won't be around to see this all the way through, tonight I wanted to go over the process, the plan, and some of the people who I have delegated to take on some of these tasks, and these are the kind of things we're talking about. We have miles of fencing, miles of pathways. Courts all over town that need to be resurfaced. Basketball courts, tennis courts, we have unused surfaces at a half dozen of our parks that currently are just sitting there with no purpose, and we're going to talk about that in a little bit. Stormwater issues, regrading of parks, and things like this. This piece of equipment, it's not broken down, but it's obviously quite old, and these pieces are powder coated, meaning they can't be repainted, and this piece is probably a good 25 years old. It's time for it to be replaced. It's at Mario's favorite park. Yes. So some of you have heard me give my spiel before, there are six major divisions to our department, and some of those are revenue-driven, and some of them are tax-driven. They range all the way from the crack and the programs, and over at the other end is park maintenance, which is very similar to finance, or codes, or trash. So we range and we cover the gamut. And when I was made Assistant Township Manager, a number of years ago, I was tasked with three things. One was Haverford Reserve, development of that. Two was the stadium, where we put on the new roof and put in the new rink. And three was park maintenance, to take our whole park maintenance system, which up till then had been under Public Works, and this is not to point any fingers, but it was somewhat of a stepchild. It was not on anybody's list, but we've tried to take that and move it into the 21st century. But over the years, because of the scope, I think now I want to bring up Brian Barrett. Brian has been, for the last 10 years especially, overseeing anything that had to do with revenue development, all the revenue stuff, all the trail stuff, I've handled that. Brian, any programs or things related to money in, money out, has been under prime. Brian has a degree in finance. Brian has worked with me since 1985, and I think it's because of his background in finance that we have had the great success that we've had in this township. Brian is also a member of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. So with that, I'm going to ask Brian to come up and talk about his part of the presentation.
Well, thank you, Tim. I will spend the next few minutes discussing two things. One is my role in the Parks and Recreation Department, and the other is the Comprehensive Plan the township is undertaking, and how that plan will impact Parks and Recreation. As you can see from this slide, the Recreation Department revenues have doubled since 2011. That increased revenue represents expanding services offered to the residents. The amount of programs and services offered has grown year after year. In 2011, before the crack opened, Tim and I sat down with Amy and Larry to explain our business plan, which defined how the crack would operate and be funded within the overall budget, and what our cost recovery would look like. Our goal was to manage our growth, and my role was to work with the program staff to make sure that we generate the revenue needed to meet our budget goals. That plan has been successful. As Amy and Larry can attest, we have met or exceeded our budget projections every year since the crack opened. This next slide deals with the economic benefits of Parks and Recreation. Tim alluded to a few of those, and how it impacts, and I will discuss how it impacts municipal planning, specifically the Comprehensive Plan. This board has begun the process of updating the Township Comprehensive Plan, and I want to discuss how these two things intersect. Tim and I attended a leadership summit in December for Parks and Recreation professionals from around the state. It was put on by the Pennsylvania Recreation and Park Society and the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. During this summit, there were significant discussions on the aging infrastructure in Parks and Recreation, capital spending, maintenance, and the economic benefits that investment in Parks and Recreation bring to a community. We heard about studies that point to rising property values due to well-maintained parks and home buyers stating that the quality parks and recreation are major factors in deciding where they choose to live. I have personally heard many residents express pride in the new facilities at the crack and at Haverford Reserve, and non-residents expressed sentiments that they wish they had similar facilities in their communities. This is a testament to decisions this board and previous boards have made and continue to make. As Tim mentioned, I am on the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. Comp Plan will guide township decision-making for the next 10 to 20 years as it relates to Parks and Recreation and the rest of the township. From the slide that you previously saw, over the lifetime of a park, maintenance represents 75% of the total cost. A well-maintained park system is a source of pride, an economic asset, and central to the health and quality of life in a community. To make the most of the capital budget, we need a plan to spend wisely and maximize our assets. So a well-thought-out maintenance plan to make sure we protect our investments is key, and Jason O'Brien, our Park Maintenance Supervisor, will touch on that. The role of the Recreation Component of the Comp Plan will address four areas: facilities, programs and services, management and operations, and financing. That plan will be developed with community input and from different stakeholders, like the business community, civic associations, the youth sports groups, the school district, and township staff. The Comp Plan will develop goals and have an action plan for implementation, which includes timelines, leadership, resources required, and the benefits derived. This is an exciting process, and a well-done plan will benefit the township for years to come. The Park and Recreation Team is looking forward to the challenge, and the future for Parks and Recreation and Haverford Township looks bright. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Thought you might enjoy this. Came across this in some files. This is from 50 years ago, and apparently this Comprehensive Plan was never completed, just the map showing what they recommended in 1969 for future land use. Kind of interesting. Jimmy, I think you might be the only one that knows some of these people.
Oh, I'm sure.
Steve Campetti.
Oh, Steve.
Yeah, I didn't realize you went that far back. That's the only name I recognize. The next person I'm going to ask to come up, she just celebrated a very significant birthday. She has been with us for 10 years, and as I tell her sometimes, 39 years ago, as some of you know, I was brought on as a CETA employee, one-man department, the whole bit, like Larry a CETA guy, with the job of straightening out the park permits in town. And as I say to people, 39 years later, I still haven't gotten it right, so I passed it on to Eileen. So Eileen handles not only all of our facility permits in town, she also handles all the rentals up at the crack, but as anybody who knows park permits, she's got a heck of a job, so. Eileen Meton.
Driving through Haverford Township any day after school and the entire weekend, you can't help but go past one of our 33 parks. And in that park, you'll see kids playing sports, teams having games, teams having practices. My job is to organize all these groups. Every group has submitted a field permit application and gotten a permit from me. The permit gives the group the right to a specific field or court on certain dates for a certain time. I put the puzzle together dependent on the group's needs, numbers, and field availability. Let me see this. Okay, so these are the numbers of permits issued in 2018. You can see our community sports permits, we're almost 7,000 participants, there were 102 permits. The Commissioners know how popular our civic groups are. If a civic group wants to have a movie night, or if they want to have an Easter egg hunt, they put a permit application in, and I give them the permit. Not to brag about the Recreation Department, but we had 2,600 participants in our summer programs and our camps throughout the years, so they had 32 permits for the fields. And then a couple of years ago, we put in the pavilions. The pavilions are utilized all the time, and families love them. I had 115 families use the pavilions last year, which about 200, almost 3,000 participants. Okay, now just, let's see. Okay, so who gets the permits? All right, the CYOs get the permits, they don't have fields, they need us to help them with that, that's how they can have their sports. The schools, Haverford High School, Haverford Middle School, and a lot of the private schools don't have enough space, so they get permits through us, they use our fields. And then the sports organizations, you know, there's Haverford Soccer Club, there's Brookline, there's Hilltop, there's Haverford Heat, I could say these in my sleep. So they're the ones who use all our fields. So next time that you're watch, on the sidelines, watching a game with your family or with a civic group, you'll get a better, maybe understand, have a little bit better sense on how this all came together, and maybe you'll think of me. So let me just leave with this slide up, because this is the new Linwood School. So the new Linwood School is going to be built on the field that's a school district field, but that's going to have ripple effects, and it's basically going to affect permitting for a couple of years, so now everything will change again. That's it.
Happy 21st birthday. Happy to be able to drink a beer.
Jimmy, shall we sing to her?
Jimmy did sing for her, it was very nice.
It's embarrassed, Jimmy.
Next gentleman I'm going to ask come up, he did not get any sleep last night, so you think you're tired? He's even more tired. As I mentioned, in 2008, I sat down with Larry, and we devised a plan that we thought, since 1983, I had been encouraged in Township Manager, even though at that time I was not in charge of parks. And Al DiGraalmo was the Director of Public Works, and he used to tell me, "Kid, you have nothing to do with park maintenance." I'd say, "I know, Al, I'm just suggesting." And the things that I was suggesting were three things. I said, "We should have a dedicated crew for park maintenance, a dedicated crew. We should have inspections, regular inspections, because a couple of times we've been sued over the years, and it's just good to have something that can show. And we should have ongoing funding." And fortunately, working with Larry in 2008, we devised a plan in the beginning. In 2009, we would have a dedicated crew, and Jason O'Brien has been the head of that, and Jason has made continuous efforts to upgrade our whole plan to bring it into 21st Century, and to continually prioritize on making more efficient and effective use of our resources. And it is a challenge. It's a real challenge, it's an ongoing challenge, but Jason has done a great job, and I, I was coming across, here's some of my different memos for the last 25 years, encouraging. So again, I commend this board, because that's the third part, is ongoing funding, so that it's like, you know, anything, when you get way behind, I remember you talking about smoothing of our whatever debt years ago, and that whole idea, but, you know, when you get far behind in something, then you gotta do extra stuff to catch up. But my hope is that move...
For the record, I was against smoothing.
I just remember endless conversations, but it's the same idea. If you get horribly out of shape, if you want to get in shape, you've got to really push yourself, but then you got to maintain, you know, like it's anything. And my hope is moving forward, we won't have to have this kind of allocation, but for the next few years, it's going to be a lot, it's going to be big. I can't overemphasize the scope of what we are doing, but it's all good stuff. I'm going to ask Jason, just come up and talk a little bit about what he does for park maintenance, and then we'll go through how we're going to proceed.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to explain briefly what makes up our department, the responsibilities that fall under the umbrella of Park Maintenance, and how we respond to the issues and prioritize. I'm also going to touch briefly on our inspection systems that Tim mentioned. Our Park Maintenance Department is made up, operates year-round, is made up of staff of six full-time employees and four part-time employees. We hire seasonal employees when they're available, but these 10 employees are the base or the foundation of our department. The responsibilities get divided into two divisions. There's the grounds and landscape division and the facilities maintenance. Grounds and landscape takes care of the mowing, the trimming of the grass, the hedges, et cetera. And the facilities maintenance takes care of the playground equipment, the buildings, concession stands, bathrooms, water fountains, and everything related mechanically to that aspect. As Eileen's numbers show, many of groups use our facilities. We establish relationships with these athletic groups, civic associations, and township staff to help us understand the demand of our parks. We develop maintenance plans to accommodate these demands. We like to use a proactive approach designated to minimize risk that typically present themselves from season to season. Working throughout the season, though, there's always unexpected issues that arise. We respond to these issues based on a priority using these guidelines: safety and potential for injury, location and severity of the problem, how it affects, how it impacts the park users and residents. We respond to all these issues, resolving the higher priorities immediately and others when time allows. Scheduling does have its challenges. Because many variables can affect our opportunities, some examples would be seasonal weather, park occupancy, special events, equipment failure, or the availability of resources. The Park Maintenance Department is not only responsible for Parks and Recreation, but all facilities within Haverford Township. That includes municipal buildings and grounds, parking lots, highway medians, and other related This image here, that's just the numbers, this image here shows last year how we spent most of our time. I like to point out it says "weather loss" up there. That doesn't mean the department remains stagnant, I just wanted to point that out. Today's a perfect example of weather loss. It's something that takes us away from our park and, park and, park maintenance schedule. We typically plan for the events annually that are consistent in our parks and the season they fall upon. We utilize the less, less active times in our parks to do projects like installing equipment or scheduling lower priority issues. Here are some examples of our responsibilities and the times we schedule them throughout the year. I know this is, may be a little bit confusing, but this is kind of where we typically schedule throughout the year, and you see that we try to utilize even the winter months as opposed to the growing season in the summer when the parks are more active. I'd like to talk about our park inspections. Three of our staff members are trained and certified in playground safety. That's by the National Park and Rec Association. Using the specifications and the guidelines recommended by the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission and the National Playground Safety Institute, we perform semi-annual inspections of all of our playground equipment to sure, to ensure that they're safe and meet performance standards. The purpose of this is to recognize hazards, document them, and address them accordingly. Out of our 33 parks, there are 26 of them have playground. That's 40 composite jungle gyms, 78 freestanding sliding boards, and 178 swings. That's 2,000 feet is chained just for swings. We go every, we go over every piece, checking every nut and bolt. This is an example of what we would be looking for during our inspections. We would respond to this typically by probably deciding whether to take this out of service, rate the potential of injury on this, and then we'd contact the manufacturer and get their recommendations on how to repair this. We're always exploring ways to become more efficient, applying different strategies and developing resources. Last year, we received the addition of a new tractor, which helped us out tremendously. Having resources like these available will help us save on time, cut costs, and increase productivity. We will continue training and education to keep up with standards. We will continue to develop and implement maintenance programs that create safe, clean, and attractive parks that Haverford Township can be proud of. Thank you.
So as you can see, there's a lot more to taking care of parks than just cutting grass, and even things like, we're about to take on the Brookline School. So I'm assuming Jason will be charged with maintaining that. And that's, next thing I want to say, there's other things to consider, it continues to grow. You know, not only has our program division grown continuously for 39 years, but what's happening in our parks and the responsibilities in our parks continues to grow and grow and will grow. But again, it's part of what makes this an attractive community. I want to stop on recycling a bit. I spoke to you a few months ago and a year ago about this. Here's the issue with recycling. I am going to suspend our recycling in our parks for the time being, and the reason being, if you remember, I mentioned I had an intern last summer from Penn State, an environmental engineer, and I asked him to do a dirty job of just going around and checking what's in our recycling. The reality of it was, there was no difference between what's going in our recycling cans in our parks and our trash cans. And we're not unique. Any public space, that's the case. We have another intern working with us now, she gave me this whole report, planning for success, and it points out that it is virtually impossible in a public space, not a controlled space, but a public space. And as you all know with the issues with China, they are not taking the recycling that they once were, and so actually now, some of you may know, Philadelphia is burning its recycling, and it's burning it down in Chester, creating more pollution than they are, we are solving. So recycling is at a real crossroads. But the reason I'm suspending it is because, A, it's not effective, it's a waste of our time, it simply is wasting our time. But the second part is, I want to buy trash cans, permitted trash cans, that meet some of these guidelines. I'm not giving up, I'm just calling a timeout, to try to come up with the cans that are recommended if you are going to attempt to have recycling in a public spot. Recycling, as Larry can attest, has changed radically ever since China stopped accepting our recycling. There's a glut in the market, if there's any contamination, they don't take it, and in a public space, it is virtually impossible. People will throw their whatever in the nearest can they see. So we have to change our cans so that it's not just an open can, it simply does not work. Here's all the cans we have out there right now. It's a big investment, but that's, if you hear me saying why there's no recycling cans in the parks for the next couple of months, it's because it simply is not working. It's a waste of our resources. We have a crew going out picking up the trash, we have a crew going up picking up recycling, and it's all going in the same spot. It doesn't make sense. So it's pretty significant. We want to give it our best shot, but I just want to put it out there, and a lot of people are saying recycling as a whole model, as Jerry probably knows, our people are questioning it, it's much more about waste management. But it's a big thing, but I wanted to make you know that.
Hey, Tim? So how will the new trash cans necessarily change people's habits, their bed habits?
That's a great question. If you want, I'll send this paper out to you. It's a couple of things. One is the size of the opening. Two is where you place them. You know out front here where we have two trash cans right beside each other? That's absolutely paramount. You have to have it beside each other to even have a chance, because people in a public space would want to use whatever trash can is closest to them. The data shows it over and over and overwhelming. Can you just, at the microphone, so people at home can hear you? No, I'm sorry. So that's, that's it, and labeling, the size of the opening up top, there's a number of things. I'll send this out to all of you so you can read it, but it's pretty compelling, and alls you have to do is take a walk out on our, our parks and see it. It's no knock on anybody, it's just the reality that in public spaces, it's virtually impossible to have an effective recycling program unless you really think through where you put your cans, what types of cans you have, the labeling you put on your cans. It's something, it's one thing to do it because it looks good, feels good, but I'd rather give it a shot at having it effective. And then if two years... And then if two years from now, you decide it's still not effective, that's somebody else's call.
How, how long do you expect this to be till we get the trash cans?
I'm sorry?
How long do we expect it to be till we get the trash cans?
My hope is to have them out there by June. Again, I'm just, you know, Kevin, I can show you these pictures, you know, I'm, I'm all for it, believe me. I pushed it 10 years ago, as Larry can tell you, but this is, you know, it's just the reality. It does, it simply is not working. And it's not just here. You know, I'm not blaming the people at Haverford Township one bit. It's simply, you know, it's an exercise, but there's no reality to it. The, when Andrew, the intern we have from Penn State, he went through the trash cans and he said, virtually zero difference between what's in each can.
So, Tim, well, you'll be replacing all the existing trash cans?
Here's what I'm going to do. Here's what I'm recommending.
Okay.
Anyway, I, I think I mentioned this this summer when I gave my presentation. In our major parks where we have the little leagues and our summer programs, we'll start off this summer by putting in recycling cans with permanent trash cans side by side. And then we'll use that as our pilot program and see if, you know, how successful is that? And then hopefully it's successful, then we start going to all the parks with that. But I'm going to put permanent trash cans at least in the major parks.
Okay. Is, is part of the problem the fact that we don't have enough trash cans, or are they maybe not in the right place, or?
Well, as you can see from this picture, yeah, part of it is where they are, part of it is how they look. You know, it's a challenge. Again, none of this is to knock anybody, but we don't want big trash trucks driving across our parks either, you know? So we have to put them where we can get to them. At the same time, you're trying to put them where people will use them. And, and again, studies show that people are going to use whatever can is closest to, period. So if you're going to have one, you have to have both. And you can see from that picture, this is pretty common at our parks.
And, and slightly?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, just, you know, yeah. There's a lot of science that goes into it. So the process and the priorities. We have four general categories: safety, as Jason alluded to, aesthetics, some of the things that we've shown you, users. And what I mean by users is, and, and new ideas. When I say users, I'll, I'll get to that on the next slide. You see, the first phase, Amy had recommended that we try to allocate funds for the next two years so we don't have money sitting around, which is part of why we wanted to get it moving as soon as possible. And then the phase two will come after that. So I said, let's get started. Some of you may be aware, our veterans field was affected by this building, somewhat significant. For the last two years, Brookline, baseball, and Sacred Heart were certainly impacted because of this building. They lost field space. And so we put that at our top of our list, and we've been working with the engineers to create, reconfigure the field, again, with the idea, let's build a field that will work for the next generation. And some of the changes that have taken place. But we lost some, some space on the field out there, and because every foot matters, literally can no longer play two games at the same time. We don't have a full football field out there, so we're doing a lot of work. But we started in December. As soon as this board approved the funding, we started. Here it is, March. It's a long process. It takes a while. The dog park, we've talked to the engineers. As board knows, there's an erosion problem at the dog park. The playgrounds, I'll be reaching out to the commissioners in those areas that we've identified as the playgrounds that should be first, based on Jason's report.
Thank you from Larnark.
Said, "Thank you from Larnark." Somebody say something. So I'll be reaching out to those commissioners. Tennis courts, I'm going to ask Eileen to oversee that because she is most familiar with the permits are. And again, we're trying to do all these things at the same time, allow people to continue to use some, so we have to figure out how to coordinate all that. Unused surfaces, we have them at guest, we have...
Can I ask one question on tennis courts? First off, how many tennis courts do we have in the township?
Gosh, I should know. I don't have that in front of me.
That's all right. My, my question is, given the popularity of pickleball, does it make sense to possibly have half tennis and half pickleball or something? I mean, because it's...
That is a very good, good, very good question. And that's part of why I'm asking Eileen to oversee that, because as Dan can tell you, at, at the paddock, pickleball is very popular. As a matter of fact, it lends right into my next area, the unused surfaces. We have court space at Guest Park, Bailey, Paddock, Westgate, Grange, Richland. And I think it warrants exactly what you're saying. How do we, what do we do with those moving forward? What makes sense for the next 20 or 25 years, moving forward with those surfaces? And I'm going to suggest, again, that we'll reach out to the commissioners and say, are there people in your ward that you would like us to meet with? Civic associations to, to see, what do you want to do with these? Because right now they're run slightly, and perhaps pickleball is the answer for some of them. But again, at your tennis courts, it may also be some of the answer. I, I 100% agree. That's, that's the concept. Walkways, I only put three in there, just as examples, but we certainly want to get started. I'm going to talk with our engineers. Again, part of it is weather, part of it is you can only do so much at a time to a park, but Westgate, Merwood, Bailey, a lot of those walkways need to be fixed. You know, they're just in bad, bad shape. And then again, I see at the bottom, trash cans, benches at all the parks. So it's big. I can't overemphasize how big this project is. And it's going to be for the next five years. It's a five-year plan, and things will change, and that's why I'm going to be working with Brian to keep an eye on those things, keep an eye on priorities, keep an eye on the money. How do things go? But I, I say to you, the next generation will thank you, and it's, it's very much worthwhile.
Tim, can I ask you, sorry, but two questions. Number one is the, so I'm just wondering if, if it's, why is it a five-year program? We have, we have the 2.5 million sitting in the bank now. We're obviously paying debt service on, on that money. Why not, why not try to accelerate that significantly?
I think realistically, Andy, Amy had asked me how much we thought we could do in the next two years. And realistically, it's, it's going to overwhelm the department. Quite frankly, they're going to need help. You know, not only am I leaving, but they're going to need some help.
Outside contractors.
It's just so much. You know, you can only take on so much. And I think some of these warrant discussions, you know, like what do you want to do with Richland? What do you want to do with Bailey? What do you want to do with these unused surfaces? And that's why I tried to show this veterans thing, things move, you know, slower than you wish they would, because dependent on the scope of the work, you have to put it out to bid, and all that has its own timeline. So I'm just trying to move it forward as fast as possible at the same time. You know, my hope is to get the whole process moving in a good direction. But it's, it's going to be long, and it's, it's big. There is no doubt about it. So I think realistically, we can only take on the first part of it and then move on to the next part in a couple of years.
Okay. And the second part, I, a second part of the question is, I didn't see anything allocated for fencing. Fencing is, and, and all the parks is dated, rusty, you know, unattractive.
Yeah. No, you're certainly right. And that's why I had that way back, you know, that fencing thing, and you're right. I didn't put that, this list, I don't know if...
You had it there, yeah. I didn't see it in your, the kind of action list, though.
Do I have that number somewhere? Let me show you. There's the sidewalks and the fencing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So it is roughly four miles of fencing and four miles of walkways. And our plan is, this is just interior fencing too. We're not talking about the perimeter. It's a lot of fencing. And our, so our thought is, as we move forward with some of these projects, like the tennis courts, you resurface, put up new fencing, do this, put up new fencing, and then there'll still be other fencing, you know? But again, I don't think we, I think we want to pace ourselves so that, because parks are still going to be used, and it, it's going to require some real coordination. So haven't forgotten fencing. It's, it's very much part of this.
Is the fencing done by, by our park maintenance, or is it done by?
Good question. The, the reason I wanted to point that out, this kind of stuff is not, this is all going to be bid out, because it's just way too much.
Right.
You know, so...
So, I mean, I, I just, to Commissioner Lewis's point, you know, the money's in the account, we've already borrowed it.
Well, not all, but right, we've only got...
We borrowed 2.5.
2.5, and then we have, the second part is in a couple of years.
I mean, I, I guess my point is just that we borrowed 2.5. Certainly anything that we plan to do that would, you know, I, I understand there's limitations on the existing park staff, but if there's something that we're going to bid out, I think we, it would be in our interest to expedite that as much as possible.
I'm sorry, Kevin.
I think it would be in our interest to expedite that as much as possible.
As much as possible, yeah. I don't think, I don't think we can cover all the fencing and all the walkways and all the courts and all the other work with just the 2.5.
No, I, I don't think we would, but whatever we plan to cover with that, I mean, I just, I, I don't, there's no sense in not bidding that out this summer.
Alls I'm trying to do is show you the, the priorities for this year, you know, to try and get this whole process moving. And certainly, the more that we can get started, at the same time, recognizing parks are going to be used, so what, how disruptive do we want to be at any particular time? But I don't disagree with anything you're saying. You know, we want to get the whole ball rolling. It's big, yeah, but I also don't want it to have it just unmanageable, because it's big. It's, it's, there's a lot, lot of work to be done, and I think trying to, like, some of these parks, I'll use that as an example. This is Richland Farms. Certainly, there's no reason why we can't replace that fencing because it's along the road. You know, it's not going to impact anybody. So to your point, yeah, other, other fencing may, you know, if it's, Steve?
Tim, I'm sorry. Phase one, what does that begin?
Phase one is underway. That's with Veterans Park. Veterans Park, the reason we felt like Veterans Park should be top on the list was because those people have been most impacted by the construction of this building.
Is Westgate in what?
Well, we'll be, I'll be reaching out to...
Westgate, Grange?
Yeah, we're going to be reaching out to you very soon. We're going to, we're going to move on the tennis courts, you know, right after this meeting, really. A lot of these things that we can, it's only the things where you want to be involved in discussion. For instance, as, as you know, we've talked about, you have four courts, going to Andy's point, we're going to resurface two tennis courts. The question is, on the other two tennis courts, do we tear them up or do we repurpose them for something else? And that's where I'm suggesting, if you'd like, if the commissioner would like, that we involve your civic association in that discussion. And as you know, those discussions take time.
Yeah, they do. And when you're ready, I'll, I'll let the civic know.
Well, I'll be reaching out, and that's why I wanted to do this presentation, let you know, I'll be reaching out to all of you, or someone in the department, will be in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
But I think we also need to be mindful that in priorities, we have to address safety concerns first.
Exactly.
The Supreme Court of Pennsylvania in January came down with a decision dealing with recreational and property issues in a case called Bruin that, you know, I've discussed with township manager and our solicitor, potentially heightens liability issues for all municipalities. So that we can't ignore those issues here, because we have to be proactive, and I know we've discussed having meetings to deal with that, but I think that has to be a priority too. If there are safety concerns, they need to go first or be at the top of our priority list.
I, I agree, Dan. And so it's, by seeing that priority, safety is number one. Yeah, yeah.
Timmy, do you remember back in the early 70s, down at Murray Place, we had the tennis courts? We put parking meters in there?
That was before my time, Commissioner.
But you were in your 40s, I was in my 30s.
I've been here a long time, but not that long. Anyway, with that, I will finish with, "The next generation will thank you." It's a big, there it is, the next generation. But even more so, let me read this to you. I thought you'd get a kick out of this. This is from a magazine on city and county and, you know, just innovative things that people do. It says, "Same problems, different century." It says, "This magazine is running articles from our past that reveal political leadership of the past considered important. Local leaders must have the political acumen to convince their constituents that investments today will pay dividends tomorrow. It was true 100 years ago, and it is still true today." So this is from Colonel Arthur Woods, who's the Assistant Secretary of War. And it's 1919, and World War I has just ended, and he is saying, "Now is the time to get back to all those municipal projects that you've been putting off, like paving your streets, fixing up your parks, et cetera. The benefit results will be incalculable." He says, "Spruce up, now is the time to begin."
I think Arthur told me that, Tim, back in 1919.
Anyway, thank you for your time, and, and certainly, as we move forward, I will reach out to you and we can engage in conversation, but I want, just want to give you a sense of the scope and the focus, and again, who will be involved.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Tim, I would just say thank you for your thoughtful presentation, and your team here did an outstanding job, and it's exciting to see the long overdue improvements on, on the horizon. So thank you for your, all of you for your efforts and leadership. I will now turn to our Commissioner Committee updates. I'd like to start with our report by our ad hoc search committee. This committee was formed by Commissioner Wexler when he was president, and I've asked him to chair this ad hoc committee, so I'd ask him to give the board and more importantly the public, an update on the status of our search.
Thank you. I'll try and do it without a voice. As you'll be able to tell, I lost my voice yesterday. Back in November, we started, we met with a consultant, the township hired a consultant to guide us along the process. In January, we, we did a national search advertisement. We received, with the deadline submission of January 31st. We then reviewed those in February and cut the number of resumes. We had resumes from the Republic of Korea and Alaska, as far away. So it was an army, army officer in Korea that was interested. The committee met, we narrowed the 30 or 40 resumes down to seven candidates that we interviewed. We then interviewed those for a period, a whole day, cut those down to four. And then this afternoon, as Commissioner Lewis said, we, we interviewed the final two. And we will be ready to make a recommendation at next month's meeting and extend an offer to a new, a new township manager. So I'd like to thank everybody who's on the committee, like to thank the township employees that were on there for all their input, and especially thank all the applicants who were interested. We found out through the process that we're, we're an attractive place to be a manager for. Many people wanted the job, and very qualified people. So, so we've started November, and today was the last day. We'll make a decision, announce a decision next month, but just so the public knows, we went through a national search, and it concluded today, and we'll make a recommendation and appoint that person in public next month.
Thank you, Bill. It was a very professional process. Thank you for your leadership. Does anyone else on the board have any Commissioner Committee updates? Mr. Commissioner Wexler, Commissioner...
Want to talk about the RFP with the comprehensive plan?
Oh, okay.
We met today, and she, we...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's out. We have some people interested. We've been answering a lot of questions. The deadline is March 18th, and then the committee will get back together and we'll start, you know, going through and scouring each of the, each of the submissions. And hopefully by April, we'll narrow that down and have a consultant on board for the comprehensive plan.
So it's coming around? Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other Commissioner Committee updates?
I may.
Yes, Commissioner Siegel.
For the public, because after the discussion of the Brookline School, just the Township Property Committee will be meeting, it's a private session, because it deals with real estate, but we will be meeting tomorrow night. Separately, the ordinance committee has been addressing two issues. One is our soliciting ordinance, which had some legal concern. We have a revised draft of the anti-soliciting ordinance that I anticipate would be discussed at April's meeting, not at March. Similarly, the codes department raised, has had questions, and there's been some issues regarding, again, our curbs and sidewalk ordinance. We anticipate bringing those discussions up in April as well, neither for this month.
Thank you, Commissioners Siegel. Any other updates?
We'll be discussing that at the work session, the curbs and sidewalks.
Absolutely.
Good.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a.
Meeting is day and tomorrow night here?
Excuse me?
It's for the.
The meeting.
Just for the property.
The property meeting.
Tomorrow night at 6:00 in our meeting room.
Okay.
Next is our crime update. Chief Viola.
The crime update for February 2019. Had 33 criminal arrests, one of them of juvenile arrests, 321 traffic citations, 22 non-traffic citations, 268 written warnings, 71 parking tickets were written, the old-fashioned way, handwritten, and 172 by the automated with the meter officers. Two major crimes that happened in this past month. Attempted homicide aggravated assault in the Westgate area. Police received report of a shooting at this location. Officers arrived and provided first aid to a male victim at the scene who suffered a gunshot wound to the head. The victim was transported to the hospital. The investigation revealed that the victim was shot by a juvenile actor who was the driver of the suspect vehicle. Details later came out that this was a drug deal which resulted in the shooting. Juvenile suspect was charged as an adult early the next morning after a search warrant was obtained for his residence in the vehicle. A weapon was located at the suspect's residence, which was later determined to be stolen fire off. And the cooperation between our detectives, Delaware County CID, and the District Attorney's Office allowed us to come to a rapid conclusion of this and bring the suspect under arrest by, we had a search warrant in hand by 5:30 the next morning. So within 12 to 13 hours, we identified the suspect. Investigation is continuing, as I reported, and we'll, we'll, we'll see where this goes as it moves forward in the judicial system. On 2/24, we had a robbery at the Citizens Bank, Bank inside the Giant Store. The actor entered the bank, provided the teller with a demand note implying that he had a weapon. The suspect fled the bank and entered a taxi cab and left North Mountain Township Line Road. The suspect named Michael Edmondson, who is somewhere in Philadelphia, has been developed, developed as a suspect, and a warrant has been obtained for his arrest, charging him with this crime. Edmondson is a suspect in two other bank robberies, one in Ben Salem and one just the other day in Upper Marion. Multiple police agencies, state parole, along with the FBI are attempting to locate him at this time. He is also out on parole, so it's also a parole violation. We had three burglaries, 500 block of Fairmount where entry was gained by forcing the rear door, 300 block of Ardmore Avenue, and the unit block of Blakely Road, which are currently under, under investigation. It should be noted that detectives obtained the video from a resident in the unit block of Cambridge, which depicts a subject in the driveway of a residency in early morning hours on Thursday, 2/7 of 5/23. The subject is checking vehicles in and around the residence, then leaves and gets in the passenger side of a white sedan parked in Cambridge Road. We feel that's part of, of the burglaries that happened up in that area. We had an aggravated assault on the 200 block of Miller Road. Two students were fighting in the classroom, and a teacher stepped in to separate them. He was struck in the face. One sus, one juvenile was taken into custody and charged in juvenile court with this offense. We had 23 thefts from autos, and I think I emailed some of the commissioners. We had probably 15 of them happened on 2/22 in the overnight hours. Every one of those vehicles were unlocked. So nothing major was taken, mostly change, $4 or $5 a car, one had $30, but it's, it's, it's the unlocked vehicles that these people are just walking up and down driveways. We did make an arrest on, for two of them, but obviously, it's still, still out there and happening on all the townships, not just here. We had 14 K-9 usages in the township, and we redeployed the K-9 officers to different shifts, so they're working around the clock now instead of just select a shift. So we have them on a 24-hour basis, so there's a lot more K-9 usages in the course of 12-hour shift. So that's my report.
Questions?
Yeah. I want to thank the police for the excellent police work that they did to solve that attempted homicide in Westgate. I also want to thank the residents that cooperated in Westgate with the police. They really stepped forward as witnesses and provided video, which, which is instrumental, as we all know, in solving crime. And at my first word meeting, I was asked, you know, what can, what steps can they take? And we said, you know, if you can get an expensive camera, put it in your window. You catch a hell of a lot. And even those people that are robbing your cars when they're unlocked, so please make sure you lock your cars as well. But you guys did a great job. You were great in the community. It was quick, response was quick. I can't thank you guys enough and our Norberth ambulance as well.
Commissioner, go a little further with, I commented at your constituent meeting last week that it was with the help of the residents and all the cameras, and they stepped forward, and it was a rainy, really bad night, and they came out and, as we knocked on doors and talked to them, they volunteered what information they had. It really made our job a lot easier because we were able to identify the, the truck involved and, and help solve the crime that night.
Right. I think the other point I want to make, Chief, is that residents have to be mindful of social media and what's going out there, and some of it was just not true and wrong. There was speculation that we had an active shooter in the area, and obviously, we didn't at that point. But, you know, you want to speak about that, social media.
It's difficult to manage, and I spoke about that at your, at your constituents' meeting also. You know, people, there's, there's some websites out there that somebody monitors a, a police scanner and starts putting information out. So, you know, during a, a major crime like that, we're, we're giving information out on a regular, very quick update basis, and a lot of times, it's just, it's not up to date or wrong because we're, we're, we're just getting tidbits of stuff. They're putting it out there, and everybody gets on social media, then spreads it, and then one thing leads to another, and it's all wrong information. We get inundated with calls with, with untrue stuff, which ties us up. So social media can be our friend, it also can be our enemy. So, you know, we monitor as closely as we can, but when we're all involved in a major crime like that, it's difficult to answer every email or text from social media because a lot of it's wrong when it's out there. So we, we do our best, and we, we've taken some steps within, within our command staff to address that and hopefully, put some of that to bed quickly when it arises. So we'll, we'll answer that a lot quickly, keep that moving, so we can try and quell some of the false statements that are out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Turning to next week's agenda, the board will be considering two appointments. One is the acting township manager. As you know, our township manager, Larry Dinatili, is resigning, retiring effective March 31st. And unfortunately, Richard Doc Doherty, our Public Works Director, is also retiring on the same day, unfortunately. So the board will consider two appointments, and the acting township manager will, and the assistant township manager will be responsible for managing the day-to-day affairs of the township and signing all checks for disbursements until a permanent township manager is appointed by this board. I would ask our township manager if he has recommendations for both the acting township manager position and the acting Public Works Director position for the board's consideration next week.
I do, Mr. Lewis. I would highly recommend this board appoint Amy Cuthbertson as the acting township manager and Mr. Mariani, Dan Mariani, as the acting Public Works Director.
I make that motion?
No, it's, it's no vote, just informational.
Sorry.
For the board's consideration. Does anybody have any questions of Larry? If not.
I just, I'll make a comment. I think it's two wonderful choices.
Thank you, Commissioner McGarry. Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
Looking at, we have two ordinances for, under consideration next week. First, ordinance number P5-2019, property maintenance code, second reading. Anybody have any questions on that second reading? The next is ordinance number P6-2019. This deals with, this is in the seventh ward, and it deals with sticker parking. Anybody have any questions on that proposed ordinance? Okay. Next week, we also have four resolutions under consideration. Resolution number 2126-2019, preliminary final minor subdivision, 217 Walnut Hill Lane. This is a subdivision of a 21,500 square foot lot into two. Two lots, one 7,500 square feet, and one is 14,750 square feet. Recommended for approval by the Planning Commission at their January 2019 meeting, subject to compliance with the recommendations made by our township engineer and by the Planning Commission. Does anybody have any questions on this resolution?
Just wondering, is it possible to get diagrams of the, where?
Eli?
I can certainly forward them for, when I submit the resolutions.
Okay.
That's fine. Sure.
Do you have some?
Yes. First, this is the one we, this is the one we tabled last month?
Yes. Next, the resolution is resolution number 2127-2019, transfer of 2018 funds. This is an annual accounting exercise that we do under the administrative code to basically balance the favorable variances in the 2018 budget with the unfavorable variances. The net effect is there's, there's no, there's no, there's zero difference, so they equal out, the unfavorable variances equal the favorable variances. I don't know whether you want to add anything to that, Amy?
No.
Did I describe that accurately, or did I miss anything?
I described it very accurately. We do this every year, about this time every year, to settle up where some departments went over and some were under in the previous year.
Thank you. Any questions on that resolution? Any discussion? Okay. Next resolution is number 2128-2019, preliminary final minor subdivision, 1200 Elston Road. Again, this is a 15,870 square foot lot being divided into two. One is 9,723, and the other is 6,154 square feet. Again, this has been recommended by the Planning Commission, subject to their conditions and also subject to the conditions requested by our township engineer. And I understand there's some revision to this resolution, Kelly. I don't know whether you could explain what that is?
There was. The Planning Commission didn't meet until last Thursday, and the deadline for those agenda, for the agenda items was Wednesday. Make sure that, you know, we're moving forward with it. So the original copy that you received in your packets was the comments from the previous review. The comments that, that are on the version in front of you now are the final recommendations. So mainly, it was just that they took care of a lot of those items.
They, they did make any additions or deletions, any additional additions?
There are maybe, I think, three or four additional recommendations from the Planning Commission, just relating to some minor items, including for Fairview, that they cooperate with Delaware County Planning Commission. Historical commission wanted to take photos of the property, and that the diseased or dead trees on the property need to be removed. For the, for Elston Road, the additional comments from the Planning Commission included some moving of manhole for the sanitary sewer cleanout locations, some documentation from Aqua. And that's essentially it. So just some minor things.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Kelly. And then we also have resolution number 2129-2019, preliminary final minor subdivision, 1417 Fairview Avenue. This is a 42,000 square foot lot being divided into two, 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 two lots, one 25,500 and the other 16,500. So they'll be building two single-family homes in this lot. Again, this has been recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, subject to the conditions they've imposed and the additions that Kelly just mentioned, as well as the conditions imposed or requested by our township engineer. Anybody, and this, this is also in the ninth ward. Any, any questions or discussion on this resolution? Okay. Next on the item, next item on the agenda is purchases. It's exciting to announce some, some purchases that I think demonstrate the township's commitment to environmental awareness and to reducing our carbon footprint. And I want to commend the Environmental Advisory Committee. Peter Pogonizi is here this evening, who's Chair of that committee, for being such a great resource to this, this board and giving us guidance on any environmental issues. And I appreciate all that you and your committee have done. The first purchase to be considered is a, is by the Skadium. It'd be 55 new wire guard light fixtures. And this was, just, just so you know, was put out, we got three quotes, and the low responsible quote was Miller Lighting at $19,975. And that is being offset by $4,125 in PICO smart idea incentives, which were applied for by township staff. Thank you for finding money with the support of our environment, Environmental Advisory Committee, bringing the net cost of the project to $15,850. And this is in our 2019 capital projects program. And Mr. Turnbull, who is our Skadium Director, thanks for being here tonight.
Sure.
Expect this project and this work to be completed by May 31st. And my question is, is, the lighting that we're doing, is it just over the rink, or is it?
It is over the rink. We started out.
Do you want to come out? I'm sorry, do you want to come up and just identify yourself and?
We started out, Amy and I discussed changing the lights from the fluorescents that we have now to a LED light bulb. When we tried to do that, the problem we ran into, we weren't getting the same light candle power down to the surface. So then we had Miller Light, it came out, we did some testing, and he recommended what we really had to do was to go to an LED fixture. So we decided that what we had to do is to do with the fixture. We started out with 55 over the rink. We do have 11 on either side that are four-tube fixtures that we didn't put in the bid at the time. I didn't know we were going straightforward from the 55. We would have done the additional 22. But this is over the rink surface is what we're working on.
So you're going to do the additional 22 at some point?
Yes.
Okay.
We're looking down the road.
And do you know, what's the payback on this? I know it's.
This is three, this is, it comes down to, for the, even with the, the labor and everything else we're looking at, this says 10.2 months, but it's actually 30, I think it's 32 months is what it was for the payback with the install and the fixture itself.
That's good.
Correct. It was. The final figures were 32 months.
Yes.
That's a win-win.
Yeah, we're going from a 354-watt light fixture down to a 90-watt fixture. So, you know, we're looking at $5,5700 a year in electrical costs right off the bat every year. So hopefully, we can even add to that when we add the additional 22 down the road.
Any questions, any discussion?
Why, why wouldn't we consider doing those extra lights?
Now?
Now.
Yeah.
Save the energy cost, and also if we have extra money in that budget that we can't spend right away for recreation.
I can totally appreciate that. The reason we didn't was because by the time we discovered that those 22 were, were not included, we'd already applied for the PICO rebate, and we didn't want to put that in jeopardy by going back and changing the scope of the project. So we thought it best just to continue with the project as it was originally written and applied for with PICO, and then go back at a later time.
Can you apply now? I mean, now that you've already gotten the grant, why not, why not apply now?
It might be in our best interest to apply as a separate project.
Okay, yeah, but, but you could do it.
We just didn't want to push, we didn't want to push back this project any further.
But you've already gotten the grant, so there's any reason to delay applying for additional grant to do that additional work?
No, and then I think it might be in our best interest, though, to proceed with what we already have been approved for, and we have the pricing for that.
So you're saying wait till, wait till the end of May until we apply again?
I would like to see this, this finished and done to completion, or we proceed with it.
And not to interrupt, but some of the lighting that we're looking at, the 22 fixtures, are really kind of our, our emergency lighting. They don't get used as much as what the rink lighting is. So we have 55 fixtures over the ice surface that we use all the time. The emergency lighting or the 22 additional are over our stands and the vending machine in our, in our skate rental. So they're not always put on as, as much as the rink lighting is. So we started out, you know, with the 55, and we'd love to get the 22 done down the road, so.
Thank you.
You got it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
The next purchase that's being considered, again, environmentally friendly, is the installation of four electric vehicle charging stations, be located in the upper corner of our municipal parking lot. And it's exciting in a number of respects. First, will be the first municipality to 100% own and operate a public charging station in the county. Two of the charging stations will be for township use and two will be for public use. And there'll be, as Amy will explain in a minute, there'll be a way to recover those costs from the public when they use the charge stations. And the second thing is, I think it shows the township, again, township will continue to lead the way and set the example for our residents with the township purchase of our first municipal electric vehicle in 2019, which is in our budget. So it'll be our first electric vehicle, which is exciting, and hopefully, some more to follow in 2020. So with that, I'd like to ask Amy Cuthbertson to come, come forward, if she could, and just present this, and maybe Peter Pogonizi here with the EAC, and I give them the credit for starting this initiative and bringing it to conclusion.
You did a very good job explaining it already, so there's not much for me to say. This was an initiative that the EAC had brought before the staff at the end of last year to consider for 2019. So we did our best to facilitate that process for them, worked with them as to what their goals were with this. As Commissioner Lewis said, there's four ports that are proposed to go in. Two would be for restricted use of township vehicles only, and two would be for public use. The staff, along with EAC, applied for some rebates that were offered by the Commonwealth and by PICO, and we've been awarded $19,000 in PICO and Pennsylvania rebates to go towards
and by PICO, and we've been awarded $19,000 in PICO and Pennsylvania rebates to go towards these stations. So the net cost to the township would be about $11,000, which is pretty much the electrical and signage and things like that. We're proposing, as you mentioned, Commissioner Lewis, up near, in this parking lot, but up near the field. It's not adding any spaces, it would be for existing spaces. The two would be for, as I mentioned, township vehicles only. Two would be for public during specific times. As per the grant document, we have to offer 80 hours per week for charging. The rest of the time can be for any use whatsoever. So we'll be looking at those times to best use the times and not impact the fields, because I know parking is very popular in this lot, especially during times of the year, baseball season, football season, things like that. So Peter, unless you have anything you wanted to add?
How do you, so how do you recover the cost of this?
Well, ChargePoint is the vendor. We're using ChargePoint, it's one of the premier vendors of charging stations nationwide. And what they do, it's actually a pretty interesting concept. Once we have them installed and are part of the ChargePoint network, our station will show up. Owners of electric vehicles have apps on their phones, their computers, they log on, they see where a available port is and whether it's in use right now. So they'll be able to see if ours is available or whether somebody's already there. But let's say it's available, it would show up green, so they could go right there and know it's available. They use their app and pay for it with their charge card over their phone. And ChargePoint will work with us to develop a pricing structure that would recover our costs, and not only the cost of the electricity, but some of the overhead costs, which isn't much, like the annual networking fee and things like that. It should probably cost us, I think about $1,000 if I was correctly, in ongoing maintenance for the networking fee and the maintenance charge per year.
Are they fast charging stations?
It's a level-two charger, so...
How do they work, and how fast are they?
It's a level-two charger. It would, of course, depend on how much of a charge you need when, you know, if you skate in on, you know, a little bit of a charge, you're obviously going to be hooked up longer than somebody who has half a charge left. But it is a level-two, which is higher than your home models that usually people have in their homes. I don't think people would be hooked up for much more. I think on average, three hours, maybe? Three hours is a good average.
Is there a level-three, or is there only a level-two?
Well, level...
Want to come up? Sorry, Peter.
Yeah, the level-three, level-four chargers are the superfast. So this is not that. Those are very expensive. Those are going to be part of sort of the regional solution. And we're actually hoping that one gets into the new shopping center that's going to be built down by the highway interchange. But this is, you know, part of the regional picture in that we, right now, we do have sort of a charging desert in this area. And so hopefully, it's part of the solution and part of also our effort to get visibility. I think Rick could use it for marketing purposes for the scadium.
Skateball chargers.
Yeah. Well, and the average T-ball game takes three and a half hours over a better field, so you're going to have people charging every single game, so that'll work out.
Yeah, but I think especially because Rick has regional clientele also, that's more of a concern to have a charging station available for regional travelers who might be coming for, you know, travel games and so forth.
For this weekend's event, which I'll hawk in a minute.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Peter, for your leadership on this initiative. Appreciate it. Next week, we have three proclamations. One is a centenarian, Kathleen Patricia Riley. We also have two unfortunately, unfortunate resignations or retirements, Richard "Doc" Dockerty and Larry Gentile. Will we receive improclamations? And we also...
I just have a second?
Sure.
Today, I was over at the Stretched Funeral Home, and Doc Dockerty buried his mom today, 93 years old. And he personally wants to thank all the employees of Haverford Township, especially those in Public Works who work with Doc every day. And thank you, and I can only say that Doc, it was a, it was a, just a very trying day for him, and he took very good care of his mom, and it showed today. That's the type of guy Doc is. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. And then finally, we have two appointments. One is to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board for Wards 1 and 8. They're individual board commissioner appointments. And then we had, unfortunately, had a resignation on the Shade Tree Commission, so we have two candidates that we interviewed before under consideration for that position. Does anyone from the board have anything additional to add?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to let everybody know, as a consequence of the, of hosting the regional, let me get my email. Because of the success of last year's Philadelphia area figure skating championships at the scadium, scadium was awarded the 2019 Eastern Adult Sectional Championships, which are going to be held this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the scadium. It is, all three days are packed with events, and they're expecting, this draws from the entire Eastern Seaboard. It is a fantastic opportunity for folks here who have been there in a while to come to the scadium. You will see people skate from teeny, teeny little children who, you're astonished they can even walk, to seniors that are still figure skating and ice dancing. And it is, it's really an extraordinary event and a great feather in the cap for the scadium and for the folks in the scadium who've really dedicated themselves to making that a real professional facility. So bravo, two years in a row to draw, you know, national-level events, and for this year to host the Eastern Adult Sectional Championships. So if you can make it, any of those days are all three days, please come out and you can see, you can see on the board, you can see the fruit of the work and the money and the time that we've committed to that, to that facility. So thanks, Rick, for being here, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, any other comments, discussion? Bearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you.